...who art in heaven is a body we congregate in these council chambers. We pray for thy divine guidance that we may do all things well according to thy holy will, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal, here. Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Present.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Here.
Mr. Sankar?
Here.
Mr. Breeden? Here.
All members are present. We have a few things to amend on the agenda. First, we need to remove the minutes of November the 12th, 2019, for consideration. We'll put those on next meeting's agenda. Under third reading of ordinances, ordinance number two is incorrect. That was already passed on October the 22nd. So what should be ordinance, the third reading of ordinances, number two is an ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to sign Exhibit 1, Pressure Regulating Valve Maintenance Agreement between the City of Norwood and the City of Cincinnati to maintain the City of Norwood water system and declaring an emergency. That should be number two, and I have the face sheet of that if anybody needs that. So that will be ordinance number two. On your desks, there is a new ordinance, number one, for the residential plan for the Energy Improvement District. The only difference is that there is an emergency clause added on page three, section six, and so we need to amend that to ordinance number one to say, "and declaring an emergency" on the agenda. And I would like to move that up on the agenda to behind reports of standing committees of council. Ms. Stevenson?
I move that the agenda be amended as you described.
Seconded by Mr. Sankar, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes.
Mr. Breeden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have no requests to address council, so we'll move on to reports of standing committees. The first is Finance Audit and Budget Committee. Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you so much, Madam President. So to the Honorable Counsel of the City of Norwood, Ohio, we, your Committee of Finance, Budget, and Audit of whom is referred claims, beg lead to submit the following report. We reviewed three claims filed with the Clerk of Council. We reviewed the facts in the cases as best we could and asked the Law Department to follow up on a few outstanding issues. We will consider these three claims at our next meeting on December 10th at 6:00 p.m. Any recommendations would ultimately be approved by the full council. Respectfully submitted, James Bonzal, Andrew Clark, John Breeden, Leslie Stevenson.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzal. Mr. Breeden?
Make a motion that the committee report be received and filed.
Seconded by Mr. Thompson, is there any discussion? Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. So in the meeting just now, we did acknowledge there's a couple of things to discuss. I would ask if the Chair of Finance, Budget, and Audit would consider amending the report instead of saying "approved," "considered" by the full council, since we're going to get additional information that will then be recommended to the full council for their consideration.
Excellent. Yeah, thank you, Madam President. So yeah, I would, I think I'd agree, that is probably better wording, so I would like to make that amendment, please.
Mr. Thompson, you accept that?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any other discussion? Yes, Mr. Breeden?
I'm sorry, Ms. Stevenson, I barely heard that. What was the, what was the motion?
You want to repeat the change that you asked for?
Yes, so I am suggesting and requesting that the Chair of Finance, Budget, and Audit consider changing the language in the last sentence to read "any recommendations would ultimately be considered by the full council."
Instead of "approved."
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes.
Mr. Breeden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next, we will consider introductory reading of ordinance number one, an ordinance approving the City of Norwood, Ohio Energy Special Improvement District Program Plan Residential Plan, authorizing and approving the execution, delivery, and performance of a city residential PACE cooperative agreement with respect to property assessed clean energy transactions in cooperation with the City of Norwood, Ohio Energy Special Improvement District and the Toledo-Lucas County Port Authority, authorizing the Toledo-Lucas County Port Authority to approve petitions and plans for public improvements or public services submitted by the owners of real property within the City of Norwood, requesting that their property be added to the territory of the City of Norwood, Ohio Special Energy Improvement District and assessed for the cost of such plans on behalf of council of the City of Norwood and declaring an emergency. I'm so glad you get to read this three times. Chris Jones is here. I would like to ask him to come up and give you, while I provided you with some information about four, four or five weeks ago, I asked Mr. Jones if he would come tonight and answer any potential questions that you might have, given overview of the program. So, Mr. Jones?
All right, very good. So it's just a kind of a quick history. The city did authorize an Energy Special Improvement District going back, I think, two to three years ago, when the first property was a commercial property, the one literally across the street, Central Park. And so when that property, you know, first came to petition to create the Energy SIT, it was for commercial properties. And so thus, you know, the commercial plan was presented at that time. Just recently, the second commercial property was approved as well through the Energy SIT and by the city, and that was Encore Technologies where they installed solar panels and LED lighting. So, so for the past couple of years, the, in the state of Ohio, there has been developments where single-family homeowners can now take advantage of PACE financing. And just as, again, a quick reminder, as far as what PACE financing is, that it is for energy efficiency improvements, including renewable energy improvements like solar panels. And so, so basically, the repayment, as again, Central Park and Encore Technologies, is a special assessment that's simply added to the property's tax bill, and there is no, you know, risk, you know, all the legal documents, you know, there's no risk to the city. Essentially, it is a pass-through assessment. But, but that in really kind of its simplicity is also what the residential plan states. So a homeowner could borrow funds through PACE, through a private lender, and their repayment would go as a special assessment on their property's tax bill, again, a pass-through scenario. And, and so, I guess without getting really deep in the weeds, I think another kind of, you know, important, you know, fact is that there are certainly consumer protections to the residential PACE. You know, so on the commercial side, you know, commercial is commercial, you know, there's, you know, property owners who are used to kind of commercial financing, these private lenders certainly do a very thorough, detailed underwriting, whereas, you know, and as we've seen again in two or three years here, there's been a couple of property owners participate, you know, we anticipate, you know, dozens possibly, you know, in a given year with regards to residential. And so, you know, those properties or homeowners are not coming forward to the Energy SIT nor in front of council every time like we do on a commercial property. So in the plan, it's essentially, you would be allowing the program administrator for the statewide program, and then how it's implemented here in the city, and that's the Toledo Port Authority, to essentially approve each of the homeowner petitions, you know, on a daily or weekly basis, as that homeowner would apply through the program implementer, which is entity called Renovate America, who's the, the private funder to this. And so, and then on, and then on the back of that, and I'll be quiet, but on the back of that, what would happen from a legislative standpoint is that either in July or August, ahead of that special assessment submission in, in September, is that we would come back and say, okay, here is the list of homeowners who participated in the residential, you know, PACE program this year for a full authorization of those special assessments.
And it can be anything that is energy efficient, so it can include HVAC systems, windows, not only just solar power.
Correct, yeah. And, you know, so I would say, you know, a lot of the homes certainly in the city, you know, have, you know, insulation and air sealing needs, window replacements, but yes, heating and cooling systems on the energy efficiency side, water heater replacements, those, those types of things.
And credit score, as I recall, had to be 620 or above?
620 or above.
Or $1,000 a month income.
Yeah, so, you know, definitely has to be equity in the home, but debt-to-income scenarios, glad you brought that up. One of the things I would point out is that, I think he said that there was a slide deck that we had provided for some informational, but, you know, as we all do, kind of go onto Google to research, you know, some of these types of things. So Ohio will actually become the fourth state to implement residential, single-family PACE. Missouri, just last year, was the third state, but then California and Florida were the first couple of states going back probably five, four or five years ago, and they did not have consumer protections in place. And there were definitely some homeowners that frankly were taken advantage of because there were not. We have really pretty strict consumer protections in place, and so would point that out without question.
Mr. Sankar?
So when a homeowner has an idea that they want to do some type of energy improvements, they apply, where do they get the forms to apply for it, number one? Then they submit it to the state up there, or is it to the local board? And then who decides that that's a good idea? And do they come and inspect the homeowner's property to say that, yeah, that it would qualify, or no, it doesn't really need this stuff, you're just looking for new windows even though yours are only three years old? Who makes the decision that, yes, this is a legitimate program and we're not being taken advantage of?
Yeah, sure, yeah. So, so the first question answered is, the, you know, so this is all going to be really contractor-driven. Certainly any, you know, advertising to residential PACE offering by the city through newsletters or other offerings certainly is appreciated, but, but this is really going to be kind of contractor-driven. So, you know, contractors that would be in the house, be it HVAC, you know, are, you know, generally will have financing offers, you know, be it a credit, you know, card type of offer from like a Wells Fargo, or, you know, whatever other offers they have. So this would just be an additional financing offer that they would provide to the homeowner. And so the homeowner would actually be calling in, you know, to essentially an 800 number to apply for the loan. And so with regards to then the actual improvements, the, the improvements do have to have an energy savings component to those. And so the contractor, if they're, to use your scenario like a window, so if they only replaced the windows three years ago, if they are, you know, looking to replace now, there has to be an energy savings component to it. So, you know, the U-value or the E, you know, low E coatings, you know, those types of things, that would actually have to be documented by the contractor, that would have to be submitted to the, to the program. And so, and so that is the Toledo Port Authority. That is their role, and, and what, you know, we're authorizing the Toledo Port Authority to do is actually review those types of things on a homeowner-by-homeowner basis.
Yes, Mr. Johnson.
Then taking another step as far as contractors, are the contractors reviewed and/or certified or applied to be part of the program, like pre-approved contractors, or anybody with a van and a ladder qualified for PACE energy?
So definitely they are pre-approved, so all the contractors do have to submit an application to the program, again, through the Toledo Port Authority and Renovate America. And so they are preregistered, you know, so, you know, also licenses have to be provided, so if they're, you know, electrical contractor doing lighting work, you know, they obviously would have to have an electrical license, you know, same thing for, you know, heating and cooling from certifications and, you know, those type of requirements, yeah. And, and I would say that, again, because this is contractor-driven, obviously wanting to make sure homeowners are satisfied with the work, there, there are, so a couple of things I would tell you kind of during the course of a transaction, is that the, the contractors don't get funded for the work until the homeowner actually signs a completion certificate stating that the work is, number one, complete, and that they're satisfied with it.
They're satisfied.
And so, so that's kind of, you know, number one. Then number two, the Renovate America entity does do follow-up calls with homeowners, asking, you know, hey, how did it go? And they will also do, you ask about inspections. Not every home is inspected as far as after the work is done, but, but they do spot checks with regards to, you know, contractors, you know, individual kind of contractors, they will do kind of spot checks, yeah.
Really? Thank you.
Mr. Thompson?
Just curious, how does, once you got the work done, how does the loan get paid back? I know it has something to do with the taxes on the house, but I don't quite understand how that all works.
Yes, yeah, so, so once the, you know, improvements would be installed in the home, you know, as, as we all know, as homeowners, our taxes, you know, January and July are those semi-annuals. So what would happen, let's just say that, kind of wrap my head around, so let's just say that a homeowner in February had PACE improvements installed, their first payment actually would be the following January, so if we're talking February of 2020, their first payment would actually be January of 2021, because the special assessments, you know, don't get forwarded to the auditor's office until September of that, you know, yeah. So, so then as a homeowner, yes, you would just see that special assessment line item appear on your property tax bill for whatever the term was that you took out the PACE loan. And, and that also is another kind of point I would make, is that similar to the commercial PACE program, is that the term of the loan can go out as long as the useful life of the improvement. So if you have a 15-year heating and cooling, you know, system that, you know, has a 15-year useful life, the term can go out to 15 years as well, which is also beneficial for a homeowner because you're shrinking that, you know, payment down.
Great, thank you.
And the interest rates traditionally are lower than commercial, that's important.
Yeah, and so those will also run with the term. So the longer the term, the higher the interest rate, but ranging basically from like 3% up to 9% is where the interest rates kind of range on the, on the loans, the residential loans. Yeah, versus like most of the commercial loans we've, you know, done, not only here in the city, but, you know, throughout the region where we've been involved, are generally in the 6% to 7%, you know, range. Doesn't really kind of matter the, the term or the size so much, but those are definitely the ranges on the commercial side anyway.
And your plan for implementation of this?
Yeah, so, so definitely first quarter of 2020, we, you know, think that's going to be somewhere in the February, March timeframe before, you know, the systems all kind of get in place to where, again, homeowners, you know, can actually apply through the, through the program. You kind of mentioned contractors, so that's kind of the, the next step is getting, and it's already kind of a little bit in process, but, you know, getting the local contractors. And that's one of the things, is that, you know, if you have a current list of local contractors, we certainly, you know, would, you know, like to, you know, have it, and we'll reach out to those contractors, but, but we are trying to get as many of the qualified, reputable contractors kind of on board to, to start out.
Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you so much, Madam President. Who actually holds the, is it, are there going to be bonds that are going to be issued? Like who holds the debt? Like how does the funding get?
Yeah, so the Renovate America entity that I'd mentioned earlier, they are the ones who are actually going to be purchasing the bonds that are issued by the Toledo Port Authority. So what will hap, yeah, so what will happen is, you know, each of the individual projects that get funded, so that credit is extended through the Toledo Port Authority, again, being the essentially co-administrator, but really the lead administrator to this program. And so once they get to roughly $2 million of, you know, in those individual loans, then they'll issue a bond to, you know, essentially replace that capital.
Okay, and what kind of interest rate would consumers see on this?
Yeah, so, the, again, it goes by the term, but generally, the homeowner's going to see like a 3% to 9% range as far as what they would pay.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions? Is there an urgency to pass this quickly, or we can do?
Your preference, a short answer would be, you know, if you needed to pass it in a second, you know, meeting from now, that would be fine, yes.
Okay.
And unlike commercial, generally commercial, we're, you know, as quickly as possible, we do have a little bit of time here, yeah.
Okay.
So your preference there.
All right, any other questions? Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for providing all the documents to our law department. It was bad enough to get it all done, but they very much appreciated those documents. Thank you. With your pleasure, Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam President. I would move that we suspend the rolls and have two readings of the ordinance.
Okay. Seconded by Mr. Thompson, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries, please have two readings.
An ordinance approving the City of Norwood, Ohio Energy Special Improvement District Program Plan Residential Plan, authorizing and approving the execution, delivery, and performance of a city residential PACE cooperative agreement with respect to property assessed clean energy transactions in cooperation with the City of Norwood, Ohio Energy Special Improvement District and the Toledo-Lucas County Port Authority, authorizing the Toledo-Lucas County Port Authority to approve petitions and plans for public improvements or public services submitted by the owners of real property within the city, requesting that their property be added to the territory of the City of Norwood, Ohio Energy Special Improvement District and assessed for the cost of such plans on behalf of the council of the city and declaring an emergency. An ordinance approving the City of Norwood, Ohio Energy Special Improvement District Program Plan Residential Plan, authorizing and improving the execution, delivery, and performance of a city residential PACE cooperative agreement with respect to property assessed clean energy transactions in cooperation with the City of Norwood, Ohio Energy Special Improvement District and the Toledo-Lucas County Port Authority, authorizing the Toledo-Lucas County Port Authority to approve petitions and plans for public improvements or public services submitted by the owners of real property within the city, requesting that their property be added to the territory of the City of Norwood, Ohio Energy Special Improvement District and assessed for the cost of such plans on behalf of the council of the city and declaring an emergency.
So then we will place this on our next agenda on December the 10th for third reading and passage, consideration of passage. Thank you very much, we appreciate it. We'll then go back to our regular agenda, third reading of ordinances, and the first is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a community reinvestment area agreement with Ventura Commons LLC and declaring an emergency. Mr. Thompson?
I would move we have the third reading of the ordinance, please.
Seconded by Mr. Bonzal, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes.
Mr. Breeden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries, please have the third reading.
Ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a community reinvestment area agreement with Ventura Commons LLC and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Thompson?
I will move we pass the ordinance.
Seconded by Ms. Stevenson, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes.
Mr. Breeden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. The next is an ordinance authorizing the safety, the Service Safety Director to sign Exhibit 1, Pressure Regulating Valve Maintenance Agreement between the City of Norwood and the City of Cincinnati to maintain the City of Norwood water system and declaring an emergency. With your pleasure, Mr. Sankar?
I recommend we have the third reading.
Seconded by Ms. Stevenson, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries, please have the third reading.
Ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to sign Exhibit 1, Pressure Regulating Valve Maintenance Agreement between the City of Norwood and the City of Cincinnati to maintain the City of Norwood water system and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Thompson?
Move we pass the ordinance?
Seconded by Ms. Stevenson, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We will move on to second reading of ordinances, and that is an ordinance making permanent appropriations for the expenditures of the City of Norwood, Ohio for the calendar year ending December 31, 2020 and declaring an emergency. Mr. Bonzal?
I think, yeah, so I'd move that we have the second reading of the ordinance.
Seconded by Mr. Thompson, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries, please have the second reading.
Ordinance making permanent appropriations for the expenditures of the City of Norwood, Ohio for the calendar year ending December 31, 2020 and declaring an emergency.
And again, this will appear on the December 10th agenda for consideration for the third reading. Move on to introductory reading of ordinances, and that is ordinance number two, an ordinance amending multiple fees referred to in Norwood Codified Ordinance, Section 1305.05, for services provided by the City of Norwood Building Department and declaring an emergency. Mrs. Hanahan, you had a new attachment, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Moore brought it out. It was the corrected one.
Oh, yeah, I've got copies for you guys.
There was just some printing errors on it the last time, so we have the new table. So the attachment A, Exhibit A is complete now?
Yes, it is.
Yes, okay, thank you. Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam President. There actually are a few errors in the second version as well. On page five, under Table 1305 dot O5K, administrative fees, penalties, and refunds, it says triple fee up to a maximum of blank. On the first version we were given, it was $1,000. And then also on that same table...
I'm sorry, where are you?
It's page five.
Okay, 1305.05?
Yep, so it says triple fee up to a maximum penalty of blank.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah, on that first version, it said $1,000. The other item is under refunds, cancellations before work begins, same page towards the end. Excel, so, it looks like Excel did something. On the first version, it said one-half instead of two-dash-January. And I think that was just a formatting issue with how Excel printed it. The second thing is that we're also missing the permit fee minimum there as well, so it printed on the first version, didn't print on the second version, so.
Might I suggest that we defer this to the next meeting? That's my suggestion, till we get this all worked out, so we know what we're thinking, what we're considering.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Mr. Reeves was supposed to be here tonight and ended up having to cancel, so I have no problem with that, until these get printed correctly.
I'd like to just make a motion to remove it from this agenda and put it on next one.
Thank you, yes.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Clark, any discussion? It's a motion on the floors to remove from the agenda tonight and to a time certain, which is our next meeting on December the 10th. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have no administration reports or other requests to address counsel. Is there any unfinished business? Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. In our last regular meeting, we received and filed a letter from OKI regarding the need to appoint a new representative, and I just would like to check with the clerk of council to see if that information was passed along to the incoming elected so they could consider the schedule of meetings before there's an appointment made.
It is not. Once I get the email addresses for everyone, it will be forwarded on.
I did share that information with the mayor-elect, Mr. Snyder, and with the president-elect, Mr. Miracle, and explained to them when the meetings were, and so I think they'll be reaching out to see if there's someone who is available. It's a strange time, it's on Thursday, the second Thursday at 11:30, so it may limit the people who are available. So they may be reaching out to folks. I'm sure they will be reaching out to see who might be available to attend those meetings.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other unfinished business? Any new business? Mr. Breeden?
Thank you, Madam President. We've got a service announcement here. It looks like the Norwood Police Department will be accepting packages through November 29th through December 31st. And you can ship those items to 4701 Montgomery Road, and if you show up with your ID, you can grab your packages. So that looks like they're proactive on theft of packages. Thought I'd put that out there.
I think every day, we have a Ring doorbell, and I think every day there are incidents showing people porch pirates taking things off of porches, so it's a great service that the police department provides.
It's real nice of them.
Take advantage of that, thank you. Any other new business? Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. A few meetings back, council approved a change that would allow us to reinstate the language of three feet as it relates to parking distance from a private driveway. I was recently contacted by a resident because there was confusion around enforcement around that. The Norwood Police Department's website does not include that update in its listing of the ordinance language. It cites the code section, but it doesn't include that revision which we passed, so I'm asking that the clerk of council draft a letter to the fire department, or excuse me, police department, making them aware, in fact, all departments, that would be helpful, but particularly the Norwood Police Department with the new language and the request that they update that on their website.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I want to just point out that our second meeting in December is scheduled for Christmas Eve. I love you all, I'm not coming up here on Christmas Eve. Is your desire to have a meeting later on that week or to just deal with business at the next council meeting on December 10th and not have a final meeting? I know some people had indicated they were going out of town between Christmas and New Year, so just in anticipation of some things that might be happening, I need to let somebody know whether we'll be having the last meeting in December. So just open it up for discussion, what is your pleasure? Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. My preference would be that we wrap up any business on December 10th if possible.
Here, here.
Here, here, Mrs. Hanahan?
Thank you, Madam President. I would agree with that, except I do have an issue with my, the ordinance on the fees, and if council would be willing to do, I mean, it's just something they have to think about. Three readings in, at one meeting. And if not, and if the first or second reading gets done, I would like to see a third reading or a third meeting to get the ordinance done.
Okay.
Unless it fails.
Shall we just plan on having the 10th, the last meeting unless something comes up, and we'll just wait and see?
Yes.
There's a possibility that some of the new police officers would be sworn in before the end of the year, and you all provide a funding for that, and I thought it would be cool that you all should see that happen, so that may, that may, we're working on seeing if that can happen. Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. Do you think you'd have an update on a timeline around the swearing-in by the 10th?
Yes. Hopefully within the next week. Yeah. They're working on it. Yes, Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you. I know, I believe I voiced earlier, but typically I am gone that week, the last week between Christmas and New Year, so if we do need to have another meeting, my preference would be that we do not have it the week of Christmas.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other new business? Mr. Sankar?
Yes, Madam President. You mentioned about the police and new hires, and recently there was a major money laundering and drug bust down in the City of Cincinnati, the Tri-State Jewelers, and then there was an auto dealership that was involved with the money laundering and the drug selling. And our Norwood Police Department was actually part of that undercover investigation, and at Sting, they were mentioned a number of times from the DEA agents who actually did the bust that day. They hit a list of all the different departments around Hamlin County that participated with them, and our guys were part of that, so they should be commended for, because that was one of the largest busts and money laundering schemes here within the area. So there are always ongoing investigations, but I would commend them for their support and the work they did there.
Great, thank you. Any other new business? Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to remind everybody about Norwood Christmas Town upcoming. So it happens on Saturday, December 7th, so not the Saturday, but the next. And it's a great event that happens at, on Elm Avenue and the Norwood Middle School Field House, which they're back in apparently this year. So it'll, it's from 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and there's all kinds of things, there's arts and crafts, carriage rides, Santa's there, but one of the coolest parts of it, I think, is at 6 o'clock when they light the tree in front of City Hall, and then we have the Holy Trinity Choir participates and leads us in Christmas carols, so it's a great community bonding event, and you know, if anybody hasn't been there, I definitely recommend it, so thank you.
Thank you. Businesswomen, thanks you. Any other new business? Mr. Sankar?
Madam President, yes, I want to just let people know that they are moving along on Highland Avenue. Recently completed most of the paving from the corporation line up to the tracks by the old Perry and Derrick Building. The curbing has all been completed from there on into Norwood, I believe to West, to Marion. And that part will be the next phase as far as getting that resurfaced as well, but it's, they're moving along quite rapidly, and so put up for a little inconvenience, and it'll turn out real nice, and you just have to watch your speed.
All right, much needed. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sankar. Any other new business? Mr. Breeden?
Thank you, Madam President. I had someone contact me and inquire about leaf pickup, and through discussions with Mr. Sankar and others, I've told that they will be around to pick the leaves up. They are short-handed and doing other things, but they will be around to pick the leaves up. I'm also told that you might want to get them out before the first, and so I just, people were asking about the leaves, and they'll be by to pick them up, be patient. Public Works is probably swamped, so.
Thank you. And you can always get free lawn bags from the health department and put them in the lawn bags, and-
Exactly.
-some people will pick them up and recycle them up to December 1st, and then-
That's what I do, so-
That's what we do, too.
That's the easiest, you know, it gets rid of them immediately, so yeah, that's probably the easiest way. Thank you for mentioning that.
And that's what recycling money goes into purchasing those bags, so that residents can get them for free, so thank you. Mr. Thompson?
And on the same topic of, on the same topic of leaves, I've been contacted by a resident complaining about people putting their leaves not only in the street but blocking other people's driveways with leaves. Don't have an ordinance that says you can't do that. It would be awfully nice if our residents would not do that. Try not to block your neighbor's driveways with your yard debris. I don't know, we might want to consider at some point codifying that, though I, because I guess apparently some people just can't be nice, but right now, you can't park in front of someone's driveway, so also don't put your garbage in front of their driveway. It'd be awesome.
Can't legislate common sense.
No.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Mr. Bonzal?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. So I did want to note that, so on their official 2019 leaf schedule, it does have November 26th as Thursday garbage route, and I live on Mills, and we're Thursday garbage route, and they were out today picking up leaves, so they are on, that was correct when it comes to the schedule, so it looks like tomorrow they're doing Tuesday garbage route on the 2nd of December, they're doing, the 2nd, 3rd, and 4th, they're doing the Friday garbage route, and the 5th, they do Tuesday, but it's likely they'll do another sweep of the city, I would think, to-
What about Wednesday?
Get anything, yeah. Wednesday, but Wednesday happened a couple, it happened on the 22nd, it happened on the 12th, but again, I'm sure that they'll come back around, I'm just letting you know what the official leaf schedule says.
Thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Breeden, did you have a comment?
I was just going to be silly and ask through the chair, Mr. Thompson, what he did to his neighbor.
It wasn't mine.
Just joking.
Thank you. Any other new business? Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. During the budget building cycle, it was brought to my attention by the Building Department that we currently have a vacancy permit fee and an ordinance that directs that that fee go into a certain fund. Whenever it was passed, it went through the auditor's office, and the state of Ohio essentially said we cannot create a separate fund for that revenue, but the language in that ordinance was never changed. And so I'd like to refer to Finance, Budget, and Audit that the language be revised so that the Finance, Budget, and Audit Committee can recommend to council the subsequent appropriations include any revenue generated by that specific permit fee.
You take that up, Mr. Bonzal?
I will, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Stevenson, thank you, Ms. Bonzal. Any other new business? We will move on to communications. The first is a letter from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control regarding bettes. I only have the front page, is this a change of ownership or?
No.
Just a renewal?
I think it's a new, new deal.
A new?
I think it's a new D5.
And any objections must be postmarked by later than 12:02. Will it be sent to all of the departments?
I cannot confirm that. I can follow up, but I cannot receive any mail.
Okay. What's your pleasure? Ms. Breeden?
Motion after the letter be received and filed.
Seconded by Mr. Thompson, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is a letter from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control regarding the Edge Inn, and that is a change in stockholders. And again, responses must be postmarked by 12:02. Same license, just a change in stock ownership. Mr. Sankar?
Yes, Madam President, I recommend that the letter and request be received and filed.
Seconded by Ms. Stevenson, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes.
Mr. Breeden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is a letter from Jean Tolbert regarding EFAB.
Dear Frank Prino, congratulations. This email confirms that you have successfully submitted your documentation in EFAB. Your FAB accreditation specialist will now begin the completeness review of your documentation. During this time, the document submission section of EFAB is locked from edits and is viewable in a read-only mode. Once the completeness review of your documentation is conducted, your accreditation specialist will be in contact with next steps. Please do not reply to this message. FAB is unable to access electronic responses to this email. Sincerely, FAB, Public Health Accreditation Board.
So as a matter of explanation, if you all don't know, there is a move afoot across the country to do accreditation of hospitals, and that is to look at continuous quality improvement and leadership qualities and obviously improvement across all phases of public health. The Ohio Department of Health is really pushing help, local health districts to attempt to get accreditation. It is a very, very long process. My daughter works for Hamilton County Public Health, and there were about six or seven people assigned to do that, and they worked for a year, got all the documents submitted, and they, then you have a site visit, and they were accredited, they were one of the first to be accredited. The City of Cincinnati went through the same process and was rejected, so it is a very, very long process. There are about 12, less I saw, there were maybe 14 health districts in Ohio that had achieved accreditation, all of which were county health districts with the exception of Columbus. So taking on this, this job, it was amazing that they could get it done. Once you apply and say, yes, we're going to attempt to do that, you have one calendar year, and their drop dead date was November the 20th, and so they beat it by one day, actually two days, they submitted it on the 18th. I was sent a picture of their, if you go to the health district, they have like a working board, and they have, they had papers across this entire whiteboard of all the different sections that had to have documentation, and while they were working on it, when it wasn't completed, they were red, and when they completed that section, they changed it to green, and when they submitted it, uploaded it, they put an X through it, and when they got all the way to the end, once you hit send, you're done, you can't edit anything. Somebody, I think it's located in Virginia, are assigned to review it, and then if your documentation is sufficient, they will assign you a specialist who will come and do a site visit, and then you have to prove what you have put on paper. So it was a heady project, to say the least, and I'm just really proud of the folks over there to do it, because nobody, nobody thought it could be done. Sharonville is in the process of doing, yeah, Springdale, I don't know, I always forget.
Sharonville, you're right.
Sharonville, is there still their own health district?
Yeah.
Sharonville is in the process of doing theirs, so they'll be submitting theirs very soon. I don't think there's any additional money, it's just that they want to prove that they are a functioning accredited health district. It will be a real feather in their cap if they get it done, so kudos to the people over there for even, there are tables and tables of papers that you can't imagine. Stop in and ask Jean to show you, it's amazing, so she, I was glad that she sent this and have an opportunity to tell you about it, so. I guess you need, Mr. Bonzal?
Yes, I would move that we receive and file the letter.
Seconded by Mr. Breeden, is there any discussion? Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam President. So one of, I think one of the things that they're, part of this process is that we're going to have to have a actual full-time health commissioner, and so-
Correct.
You know, the next finance committee and the next mayor is going to have to work on budgeting for that, but that will be something that will have to be required once the accreditate, like once they come and do the site visit, so, yeah, I know the next mayor is already aware, and there's other people that have been made aware of it, but just so you all know that that's just something that is going to have to come up.
And I will share with the next health, the next council or finance committee, I asked Jean to do an analysis of how much money was saved. They have, they've been operating without a full-time health commissioner. Technically, I can't say that. They've been acting without a full-time health commissioner who has accepted pay since 2013. Dr. Prino, who's a local physician, has been the medical director since I was health commissioner. He got, he got a stipend for doing that. When this city went into fiscal emergency, he didn't accept pay, so he was the medical director at no cost to the city. When the health commissioner left and went somewhere else, he stepped in as the acting health commissioner, and on his days off, he spends it at Norwood Health Department. And I asked Jean to do an analysis of how much money that saved us over the years, and I was, I'll share that with you and the next council. I was, I'll share that with you and the next council. Without benefits, if we had a full-time, just a salary, if we had a full-time health commissioner and a medical director, it was about $380,000. So they kept doing the work. People picked up the slack, and, you know, I'm not going to be around, but I certainly hope that the next people take that into consideration for all of the sacrifices that they've made, and give them an opportunity to be an accredited health district by having a full-time health commissioner, so. I'll get off my soapbox now, I'm sorry, but I just wanted to share that. Thank you for bringing it up. That's going to be really important. They won't even do a site visit if they don't have a full-time health commissioner, so. That's in their plan, their work plan. So the motion on the floor is to receive and file the letter. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Braden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is a letter from Duke Energy regarding application for decrease in rates.
To whom it may concern. This letter is to inform you that Duke Energy Ohio Inc. will file an application for a decrease in rates for the Public Utilities Commission of Ohio on or before February 28, 2020. The application will propose a decrease in rates of approximately $849,000 for rider AMRP, Accelerated Main Replacement Program rider, for Duke Energy, Ohio's gas distribution service, to be effective in May 2020. This decrease will result in a decrease of 11 cents per month for residential customers and represents a decrease in Duke Energy Ohio's currently existing gas rate of approximately 0.2%, based on a previously negotiated cap for this rate, agreed to by the interested parties in a stipulation and recommendation, and approved by the commission in an opinion and order dated November 13, 2013, in the matter of the application of Duke Energy Ohio Inc. for an increase in rates, case number 12-1685-GA-AIR. Under its Accelerated Main Replacement Program, Duke Energy Ohio has installed plastic mains and service lines to replace the cast iron and bare steel mains and metallic service lines throughout its service territory over an accelerated period of time. When Duke Energy Ohio embarked on this program in 2001, it had approximately 1,000 miles of cast iron mains and 192 miles of bare steel mains. These mains were aged, with some dating back to circa 1873, and were much less reliable than plastic pipe. This program has significantly reduced Duke Energy Ohio's operation and maintenance expenses, and has enabled Duke Energy Ohio to operate its distribution system at higher pressures, which provides benefits such as reduced water infiltration into the gas mains. Duke Energy Ohio currently has no cast iron and bare steel mains remaining in its distribution system. In an opinion and order dated November 13, 2013, in the matter of the application of Duke Energy Ohio Inc. for an increase in rates, case number 12-1685-GA-AIR, the commission issued an opinion and order allowing for Duke Energy Ohio to file for annual rate changes to cover the cost of this, to recover the cost of this program, including camera work expenses. I have enclosed a list of the proposed new rates. These rates are subject to change after the commission holds public evidentiary hearings. Although this letter is a formal notice to you, in accordance with Ohio Public Utility Law, we also have representatives available to discuss our rate proposal. If you have any questions about our rate proposal, please call our rates department at 513-287-2576, and we will respond to your inquiries. If you have any other questions regarding our service, please call your Duke Energy Ohio Community Relations Manager. As always, we value your role as our customers and as the elected representatives of the communities we serve. Very truly yours, Amy B. Spiller, State President, Ohio, Kentucky, Duke Energy Ohio Inc.
What's your pleasure? Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam President. I would move that the letter be received and filed.
Seconded by Ms. Stevenson. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Braden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have no absent members. Mr. Bonzal.
Thank you, Madam President. Excuse me, I would move that we adjourn.
Seconded by Mr. Thompson. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes.
Mr. Braden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. This meeting is hereby adjourned.